2021 Meeting of the Greenville City Council in order, I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
With our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus and thank you for this opportunity to come together once again. We pray that you will bestow upon us wisdom, guidance, knowledge to serve our cities in ways that are pleasing to you. We thank you for unity among us, whether we agree or disagree. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Please.
You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protam Glover? I think you're muted, Mayor Protam.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell. I just want to make sure I'm here first off, but I'm not seeing my video screen on on my Zoom. Are you getting the video of me?
I am not.
No, we do not.
Okay, I clicked, you know, the three dots and asked to start my video and it hadn't allowed me to. I'm not sure why it's not coming up.
We've got some IT folks on the line and we'll get you we'll get you straight, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield present.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
I'm here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening, but I do want to turn it over to the city attorney who will have a couple of additions. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor and Council, I would ask that an item be added to the agenda regarding consultant for redistricting, the redistricting project, and also a closed session regarding economic development and acquisition of real property in terms of negotiating purchase price.
Move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Did you want to add an additional item? I think we had sent over to Bell over the weekend, over the weekend.
Yes, sir. I would like to move that council add a discussion on returning to in-person meetings and addressing our policy regarding that return.
I will accept his motion, his friendly amendment to my motion, and remove to approve, add that to the agenda and approve the entire agenda as revised.
I second that.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call him the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Protam Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhoffer? Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
He's frozen. He has not been sitting with his hand over his face the whole time.
Okay. Um, you do have a majority.
All right. Motion has been approved, right?
Uh, yeah, I would say so, five zero.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the public comment period. Hopefully, Councilmember Meyerhoffer can rejoin us. All right, the public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly, we have one speaker for a public comment tonight. Ms. Denise McElwain. Ms. McElwain, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council.
Okay. So I'd like to address the council on the procedure of the DOT on deceased dogs and cats that they pick up. For me personally, for two weeks, every day I searched, put up flyers looking for my dog. And on that very last day on Facebook, I saw a description very close to my dog, but maybe, maybe not, that was hit by a car. I called animal services to see where she was taken so I could bring her home, and I was told they'd go to the landfill and are disposed of. During this time, I tried to get help from animal police. I was told they were too busy, had limited resources. Officer I spoke with on the phone quite a few times, never showed up at our meeting, never called, you know, to say she wasn't coming. Was supposed to set up a trap where Bella was seen, and she did not show up on that day, and the next day Bella was hit by a car. So, and to this day, I don't know if she's lost, or she was shot by somebody, or that was her. You know, dogs are our ESA. They're our companions and friends and family members. And, I mean, this whole ordeal for me, especially having some mental health issues, it has not gone well. I think that the Department of Transportation needs to do better. Universal scanners for each truck are between $50 and $150, or a logbook. You know, I can't be the only one out there waiting for their dog to come home and not having any closure. You know, if they kept a logbook or something of the animals they found and the description, you know, then people could, you know, close that chapter. But for now, they don't do anything. They just pick up the dogs and dispose of them while people are looking for them and don't know any, any difference. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. McElwain. We appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to say sorry for the loss of your, your animal. I know how difficult it can be. I've lost an animal myself in the last couple of years. I know how difficult it is, and I'm sorry that that happened. Madam Manager, I don't know if you can, we can have a discussion maybe and discuss the process of, you know, how we handle pets through APS and see if there's, there's ways that we can work with, I think you should mention DOT, and have discussions as far as what we can do to better communicate citizens and.
Mayor, Connolly, we are happy to put that on the agenda for the, for council consideration. Additionally, we're happy to provide some information to the council regarding our procedures and the city limits, and then work with the partners that exist in the community, those being in the county, county animal control, as well as NC DOT.
May not be a bad idea for us to have a discussion on what the process is and how we can continue to refine that process.
Would, Mayor, would you like me to add that to a council agenda for discussion?
Why don't you send it, why don't you send us out a notes to council so we can have a better understanding of it, and then I guess at that point, so we know which all the parties that are involved, we can make a decision on when we're ready to bring it up to a council meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. We do not have any additional registered speakers, and I'm looking in our public input mailbox, and we have not received any comments for public comment tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
There we go. I could not find the unmute button. Yes, Mayor, we have three items on the consent agenda, and they include the following: a resolution granting an electric easement for the use of the Greenville, electric easements for the use of Greenville Utilities Commission at Thomas Foreman Park. Item two is a request to purchase replacement vehicles and equipment for various city departments, and item three is a contract award to Ferrier and Sons, Inc. for the construction of the Greenville Outdoor Aquatic Center at Thomas Foreman Park. We are happy to answer questions, Mayor.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call him the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protam Glover? I think you're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to new business. Item number four, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain for a portion of the property, including the school building and office building at the Lucille W. Gorm Intergenerational Center. I will turn it over to Mr. McGirt for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Let me share my screen here. Mayor and Council, can you see the presentation?
We can.
Okay. So this is a lease with the Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plains regarding the city property, the Lucille Gorm Intergenerational Community Center. The lease with the Boys and Girls Club, the city owns the Lucille Gorm Intergenerational Community Center and is located on Ward Street in West Greenville. The Boys and Girls Club tenant requests to lease a portion of the above property for five years with an option to renew five additional years. The annual rent payments and other terms are set forth in the lease, including insurance provisions and indemnification. The tenant will operate on the, the Lucille Gorm Intergenerational Center property, a Boys and Girls Club, including a summer program and an after-school program. If you look at this map here, the tenant proposes to use the office building on Ward Street. They'll occupy their offices on the second floor, and the first floor of the office building will be a shared use between the city and the Boys and Girls Club, and also the outside grounds where there's a garden in the back of that building will be shared use between the city and the tenant. Here, where my cursor is, building two, the school building, the Boys and Girls Club will have exclusive use of the, of the building for their after-school programs, for summer, summer programs. And they also plan to use the premises with third parties that provide nonprofit or governmental services like Pitt Community College when the kids aren't, when the students aren't on campus. Pitt Community College may be using the school building. There will be shared use of the, the ground surrounding the school building. The Boys and Girls Club will also have exclusive use of the playground, and they'll have 10 spaces in the parking lot, exclusive use and the right to ingress and egress to use those spaces. As you may recall, the Boys and Girls Club gave a presentation at the council workshop back in March. Again, the PowerPoint talks about the, just a portion of the spaces that the Boys and Girls Club plans to use, the school building, playground, office building, and parking spaces, and the tenant is authorized to enter license agreements with third parties to operate nonprofit or governmental services. I think I'm joined tonight by the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, Ms. Kimberly Boyd, and the chair is on, is on the call, Mr. Mike Colombo. And the staff recommendation is to approve the attached resolution approving the lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club for a portion of the Intergenerational Center community property, and available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McGirt or anyone from the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Should this be approved? Do we have a date of when services may be begin?
Yeah, the, the Boys and Girls Club are anxious to get in there and start their summer program, so they, the lease will commence tomorrow if this is approved, and they're on the call to talk about their plans if you want, want more detail.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. So our intention is to begin community outreach immediately to engage the local families and to begin planning for the program. We also are, have some planned renovations to the inside of the building, which will begin to take place in June. And as we engage the families, we're also going to include the opportunity for the, the next couple of several weeks for them to participate in one of our other four Pitt County locations while we get the center ready, with the intention, no later than the start of school, to have things fully ready there. And we're also looking at if families needed to provide transportation to one of our other centers, if families need that in order to have summer care while we prepare the building to, to house the program by the start of school.
Thank you.
All right. I move to approve unless anybody has additional questions.
I have an additional question.
Mayor Protam Glover?
Okay, in regards to the moving in and the portions of the community that, that you're going to use, um, um, there's, there's other buildings up on there too, and I don't know if you will be in charge of those, or the city would be in charge of those. There's the little, where the little church used to be, that's the community building there, where a community can have meetings or whatever they need to have. And then there's another, where it used to be the Little Willie Center, there's another big building there. So are you not going to have use for those buildings, or are they included in your plans according to what you showed us? It's basically the school and the offices.
Mayor Protam Glover, I'll, I'll just take a stab at answering that. The city will retain the responsibility and control of those three other buildings that you identified, the community annex, the chapel, as well as the, the former sort of office, the building that was formerly known as the Willie, a Little Willie Center. The Boys and Girls Club will, will lease the classroom building that includes the auditorium, as well as the second floor of the office building, which used to be the previous, I think they called it a nunnery, or that, or the.
Yes, actually, it was the, 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 in a generation center is in a nunnery business, biz, building, and the parishionage where the pastor, where the priests live is the part that you're talking about.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And so we are looking, we have a few other ideas for some other partners to be, to participate on that side as well.
Okay, okay. As I, I would like for us to continue to have some prayer where community could have meetings, because they were able to use the center for meetings before, and if there's any way possible, there'll be a space that they can have meetings.
Right. And, and to that point, the Boys and Girls Club will lease the second floor of the, of the office, of the, the office building. The first floor will be available. The Boys and Girls Club will work with the Boys and Girls Club to make it available for community members, if they want to have meetings there. And additionally, those other three buildings are available for meetings, and that certainly the community annex, as well as the chapel are really nice locations for meetings.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm happy to renew my motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call him the city clerk for the votes.
Okay. Mayor Protam Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our next item, item number five, which I believe is the consultant for redistricting. Is that correct, Madam Manager?
Yes, Mayor, that would be a discussion of a consultant for the redistricting project, and I will turn that over to City Attorney McGirt. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor and council members, as you all know, this is a municipal election year after the federal census. Pursuant to state law, council has a duty to consider redistricting during a census year before the next municipal election. What's unusual about this year is that the census data has been delayed. I am recommending that council engage a consultant to assist in the city's redistricting. This cycle of redistricting is more complicated than in previous years, because the city will be delayed in receiving the census data. And secondly, there is a current bill pending in the General Assembly, Senate Bill 722, that may give a city in North Carolina authority to delay the election if it determines that the districts have population imbalances. Presently, the, the traditional thinking is that cities do not have the right to, to delay the elections, because the city does not have any census data under the statute. You can't, you can't do it. The city attorney's office has interviewed three North Carolina firms that are involved in election law. The recommend, the recommendation is to approve retaining Farrington Smith that has extensive election law experience. They had the best price, and the, the cost to retain them is $17,500. The city attorney's office also sent an agenda item to council since this wasn't on the printed agenda, and I'd ask the clerk to make that a part of the minutes. In terms of showing you what, what we, the analysis in selecting them, see if I can find my, my presentation here. Okay, can you see this frame?
Yes.
Okay. So again, the, the city interviewed three consultants, Legislative Redistricting Service, consisting, one of the law firms there was Farrington Smith and a demographer, Ogletree and Deacon's Law Firm, and that firm plans to hire a demographer, and Colley Priggin. They do work for the city, and they do a great job with us, and they, they, they have engaged a demographer. In terms of the, the recommendation, the acronym LRS, Legislative Redistricting Service, there, we will be represented by Farrington Smith, the attorney would be Adam Mitchell. Their standard package is $17,500. They would, that would include three attorney visits and two demographer visits, unlimited phone calls. If we have additional work, it will be $275. The city staff, the manager, and the attorney interviewed the, the law firms. It was my recommendation. I ranked them number one, because they specialize in election law. They have numerous municipal clients. They did Fayetteville's work back in 2010. They're built to do this. They had the lowest price and the most experience. In terms of the second choice, it was Colley Priggin out of Wilson. Jim Colley, who's a veteran municipal attorney in private practice, has done Wilson's work for the past 30 years. They capped, they said that they estimated they will charge on an hourly basis, capping it, they think at $22,500, 30 years' experience, and they also engaged a, a demographer who works with ECU, Mr. Scott Wade. The third choice was Ogletree Deacons. The attorney there had a great litigation experience representing the General Assembly and election lawsuits. His charge was $15,000, three trips, hourly fee, after that would be $432, and it'll be a $10,000 estimated demographer fee, because the demographer was out of, out of Virginia. But again, the, the recommendation is to go with Farrington Smith, but this is a council decision, and I, I do think it's time sensitive, and we need to get somebody on board, because the, this statute may allow us to delay the election, and it's, it's time sensitive.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Mr. McGirt?
I move we take the attorney's recommendation and engage Farrington Smith.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhoffer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call him the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protam Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes, Mayor, six to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six, which would be a discussion on to returning to in-person meetings. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a request from Councilmember Bell to add this item on the agenda, and I will turn it over to City Attorney McGirt, who will talk about the existing council resolution regarding in-person versus virtual meetings. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor and Council, the council adopted a resolution at your August 13th, 2020 meeting directing the council and all city public bodies to conduct remote meetings until further notice. And that is the rule, council has jurisdiction over city public bodies, but you also have the authority to repeal that policy or make it effective at a, at a later date. One concern of mine is, because this has been, has been in effect for a while, we, maybe wise to, to bring an agenda item back to make sure we don't make any rash decisions, but it's, it's council's decision of what to do about when to return in-person meetings.
Councilmember Bell, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to open it up, the discussion to my fellow council members. I just figured, you know, we'd add this for discussion purposes. You know, I envisioned, and this is just thrown out, you know, the way I saw things shaking out is, you know, giving staff the opportunity to prepare for a return, and possibly, you know, we're off in July, possibly, you know, planning for an August return, and hopefully that would give staff enough time. And I guess we can ask our city manager, city manager, would that, you know, give you, our staff enough time to plan for a return?
Councilmember Bell, to hold the, to have it begin as of August? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I, I think that August would certainly give us an opportunity to, to make sure all the systems are in place, all the appropriate protocols are in place if, for a return, because it's, it's just not the council, it's all the other boards and commissions as well.
Right.
And, and also to provide enough notice for the public, so they have, it's, it's open as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm open to discussion on this topic.
I, I support your, your, your idea. That's a great idea, and we should, I would encourage us to adopt a resolution, asking count, asking staff to bring us back an ordinance, making that the, the case.
I would just like to add, I mean, we're talking about essentially three months away. I, I believe that would be sufficient time for us to get our ducks in a row, if you will.
And, and immunize them.
Absolutely.
Right. It is important to point out to the council that there are no council meetings in July, so that would really, right, so it really affects the June, the June, any meetings in June. There might be some boards and commissions that meet in July, but it would really go into effect August 1st for all the boards and commissions, including the council. I, I would question Mr. McGirt, does, does the council need to approve this as an agenda item, or can they make this change this evening, Mr. McGirt?
The council could make it this evening, but it was no rush. I would like to just go through the, the pending policy and bring back an agenda item to make sure that we don't miss anything. For instance, I know the current policy exempts certain boards, like the Housing Authority, GUC, certain city public bodies that the city really doesn't interact with. So I would just like to make a thought, take a thoughtful step. So I would just like to make a thought, take a thoughtful step in making sure we don't rush it and just bring it back, put it on the agenda. It could be on the consent agenda in June, and if you, if you tell us what you want, when you want it to go into effect.
Yeah, I think.
That's my recommendation, but it's, it's council's decision.
Yeah, I think that, uh, Councilor Smiley, I think what you were kind of, um, alluding to or discussing about was that, that you, you were requesting that, you know, you give staff direction to come back with a resolution for us to come back in, in August. Is that right?
I would certainly support a resolution to that effect.
I have a question.
Councilmember Daniels?
Now, would this include, um, blended meetings? I know at the onset, um, of, of the virus and everything, we were doing a little blended. Some people would be on the phone, some would be there. Um, because we don't know the direction that this may take. Is that possibility there?
Um, but, Councilmember Daniels, I think that's certainly the prerogative that the council, if you all would like to us to also create what I would refer to as a hybrid option, where we would have some council members present and some to join virtually. If they are joining, if they are not present, it, um, we're gonna have to work out the details. There is some complication with that, with Zoom, um, but we can provide that information to you. It is important to point out that if, um, one person is joining the meeting virtually, either au- by audio or by Zoom, it is still considered to be a remote meeting, and the council would still have to, to hold decisions on public hearing-related items for the, and wait twenty-four hours for that period of time.
It does accurate as long as we're under a governor's state of emergency. If, if the state, if the state emergency order goes away, then maybe there's a flexibility for some type of hybrid meeting without having to have all the additional hearings that are currently in play under a state of emergency.
But we can certainly provide an, a hybrid option for those that would like to attend, uh, uh, on a, in a different way.
Thank you.
All right. Do you need a, a motion?
I have a question. I have a question. Um, also, um, what is, what is it with the boards, uh, or in commissions, or are you thinking about, um, what does that have to do with the, the, um, redistricting?
Um, Mayor Protem.
I mean, anyone in the, I know anyone can come, they're open meetings, and anyone can come. Um, even any of the boards and commissions that wanna come, but, um, we just didn't have that many people um, from the boards and commissions that came. I don't understand what, maybe they're a little dense today since I've been out in the hot sun.
Right, the, oh, um, Mayor Protem, the existing resolution adopted by the council provides that all meetings of all city boards and commissions, except for a few identified within the resolution, they will all be done remotely. So if the coun- if the council chooses to reverse that and decides to go forward with in-person meeting, that will also mean that the boards and commissions can come back to in-person meetings as well. And several of those boards and commissions, or at least one of those boards, those commission, um, commissions has requested to meet in person again.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay, so that will be in August.
Yes, ma'am, as of all, all boards and commissions as of August the first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, um, do you need any, uh, do you need a motion from the council, or do you have enough feedback as far as what the request is?
I would ask the city attorney what his preference is.
We, uh, we have enough direction from council to bring back an agenda item. No, no need, no need to vote on it twice, though.
Is there any, uh?
We'll bring back it, we'll bring back an agenda item, Mayor, saying that, uh, effective August first, all city public bodies will revert to in-person meetings.
Is there any hesitation from any of the council members?
Well, I, I did hear from at least Councilmember Daniels about the possibility of providing for some hybrid. So the, for those people who did not feel comfortable coming to the meetings or could not, that they could join in a hybrid, um, in a hybrid way or, or jo- join remotely. So, Mr. McGirt, we may need to factor that in.
Again, I think as long as we're under a governor's, the governor's state of emergency, if we do that, then we're still under the remote meeting laws. If one, one member is remote, the meeting is a remote meeting. And for instance, if you consider it a public hearing, you'd have to continue that at least forty-eight, forty, twenty-four hours like we've been doing, and coming back. Uh, do we wanna do that? I don't get the sense that we do, but it's a council decision.
Okay. Is that something that we wanna look into and then maybe send out an email to the council, finding out, uh, what you did find out, and if that's a possibility?
We can do that, Mayor.
And then, and the first meeting, I believe, in, in, uh, June, we'll vote on a rest.
June seventh.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay.
We will move on to City Manager's report.
Um, Mayor, I have no report.
All right, comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Meyerhoff.
I'm all set, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Litchfield.
No comment.
Councilmember Smiley.
No comments.
How about Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, would just say I'm excited for, uh, you know, a hopeful return to in-person meetings. It'd be great to be around all of you again. Um, and I would also like to wish everybody in the city a happy Memorial Day. Uh, you know, please be responsible over the weekend, and thank you to everyone who has served in our military. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels?
Um, I would like to wish my sister Gwen a happy birthday. Today is her birthday. Um, and I also would like to invite the public to our first Community Arts Day in West Greenville on June the fifth. Um, Heartoscope will present a heart of the city. There'll be painting, music, food, and entertainment. Um, bring your kids out and let's just enjoy it, and ha- and happy Memorial Day, if that goes, um, to everyone who served, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Protem Glover?
Um, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Mem- Memorial Day, and, um, just, um, let's see, we got one more month to meet, um, before, well, it's one more month or two. So, all right, I got it together. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. I mean, everyone, everyone.
No more planting flowers in ninety degrees.
No, in the sun, I've been out in the sun too long. Um, and, um, we'll see you guys back. Plan to be safe. That's it.
All right. I too would like to echo happy Memorial Day to everyone. Thank you to all the service members that have been out there, uh, serving our, our country, and, and those that, uh, have perished. We'll, we'll continue to pray for, for your families, and thank you for your service. And then finally, I'd like to say congratulations to our ECU Pirates, who are the AAC, uh, regular season champions, and they are preparing right now to play in the conference tournament, so we're hopeful that they'll do really well, win the conference tournament, and hopefully will be hosting a regional here, um, I believe, next weekend, not this upcoming weekend. So we'll keep our fingers crossed if that's the case. They've already been listed as one of the twenty sites that are a possible regional site. So we're excited about that, and we're hopeful that they'll be able to bring some more commerce to our area and, uh, generate some revenue for our local businesses. And with that, I believe we will need a motion to enter into closed session.
I'm with.
Mr. McGirt?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor and council members, the city administration requests that council adopt the following motion, uh, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven for the following reasons. Uh, instructions to city staff on how to proceed in negotiating the purchase price and other material terms for the purchase of the following properties for a public purpose. Uh, property owned by Rudolph and Angela Meven, Jr., um, parcel number zero seven six zero seven, address one one zero Greenbrier Drive. The second property is property owned by, uh, Clifton and Chris- and Christine Edwards, the third, uh, parcel three seven four zero nine zero Cortland Road. The other reason to go into closed session is to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the, in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. That is the motion.
All right. Councilmember Bell.
I approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the votes.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We are officially in closed session. I will wait for the city clerk to let us know when we are one hundred percent secure.
We're on. Yes. Mayor Conley, we're back.
All right, we're officially out of closed session. Now I would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor for Tim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Sorry, I know Brian was really excited to get back to his vacation. Aye.
I'm sorry, could you just announce yourself, please?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. I hope everybody has a wonderful Memorial Day and we will see you in June.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody.